There was supposed to be strategic planning looked at every 10 years for the county that it hadn't been looked at since 1985. So I found that the department heads were very, very competent people and I think with good leadership and management the county would be addressed of change. So I'm getting the yellow. Okay. I think that our challenges include increasing job opportunities and that's my number one focus is to bring high-tech and advanced technologies here. And I know some people say that it's going to be difficult, but I, for many reasons, which will probably help in your questions, I'll expand on that. Of course, funding public safety, that's a crucial part, creating business growth and encouraging current businesses. And thank you, ma'am.
I'm Cheryl Walker, candidate for Josephine County Commissioner, position three. Tony is running for position two. I'm running for position three. And I came to Josephine County about 25 years ago. I was transferred here with my job. I worked for the U.S. Department of Agriculture as an administrative law hearings officer. I had gone to college at Arizona State University and had a degree in agribusiness management and started out as an agricultural management specialist and had worked through that agency until I had headed up a department in contracting and property management, I'd say housing and farms, although I did manage a few sewer projects and that kind of thing, water districts. But anyway, I came here and this climate and this kind of economy was very much like what I had originally come from in Prescott, Arizona. Our industries there were cattle and mining and forestry. So it felt very much like home here and I enjoyed living here. And all along I thought, you know, it's such a wonderful place, but I could continue and see the decline in our economy due to the loss of the timber revenue that we had. And then the last few years have been just so drastic and I saw a lack of leadership in the county and it seemed to be a lack of direction and that's why I decided to run for county commissioner. I think I have the skills and experience to offer the county. I've worked in budgeting, both privately and with government, which is different. I've also served on the Revenue Committee at the state legislature when I served there. So I find that I have a lot of budgeting and financing experience that is desperately needed here because I think most of the problems that we have in our county government stem back to the loss of revenue, the lack of a budget that is serving the needs of the people. So I think that's very critical. The other thing is I've worked on a lot of nonprofits and worked very well with other agencies and I think that some of our solutions will come from those partnerships and perhaps in working with other jurisdictions such as other counties, other cities, and maybe even the state to partner to help to reduce the cost in the administrative area. One of those which I know the commissioners are working on currently, I know there's requests or proposals out on the animal shelter, but that is just one of the types of things that can be done and should be done. And I think that if we do this, people say contracting out or privatizing services, it would be devastating to our county government. I don't agree because there are certain things that we can do that will not affect our autonomy to govern ourselves and it does not affect the operation of our county. These are typically things that we have to function in our pretty much bookkeeping accounting or services that people want that are not necessary to the autonomy of the county. I think that perhaps as we go forward in the future, to be able to work together on these things with bringing in the different expertise that we have and working with other jurisdictions will help to resolve our county issues. And I would be glad to answer your questions later and expand on some of these. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Sullivan. I'm a write-in candidate for position three. Yes, position three. The reason I'm a write-in candidate is I don't feel that the community is getting an adequate choice. I was born in New York City in 1949 and I've lived in Josephine County 17 years. I have two college degrees, one in business from Queens Borough Community College and the other one from the City University of New York. And that's a BA in sociology. And I studied psychology at Sonoma State University in California. I've had a landscape maintenance business for 35 years. I do small tree work, fire hazard removal, and I've talked to many people over 17 years learning about Josephine County and I go to many county meetings. When I lived in New York, I played many sports, tennis, golf, baseball, hockey. I studied holistic health, that's still a part of my life. I was very strong in counter groups where I learned how to facilitate meetings between people, getting to the real truth. I've been a political activist, starting as a college student in New York City in the late 60s. A lifelong Democrat until recently, and I've been a Libertarian. Josephine County has transformed me into someone who believes in limited government and I'm a Ron Paul supporter. I've been politically active here for six to eight years. My core belief is the Constitution, limiting government. I believe in free speech and civil liberties. My personal values, I learned from my dad. He said, "Mark, always tell the truth. The truth will set you free." Sometimes the truth is painful and the truth is definitely not politically correct. I would tell it to you like a New York cab driver that I once was. You may not like it and it might be painful. Yes, I am a write-in candidate. And you know, I think that two candidates that are running are both nice people, but they say whoever you vote for is the lesser of two evils. And you would be wasting your vote. You're not wasting your vote with me because I'm there to tell the truth, someone who takes the strong stance and has little to lose and is not afraid to speak out. I am for the people who have foreclosed homes or in arrears on property taxes. They don't get a fat check from the government and they don't get perks. And I hope tonight you ask the tough questions and remember how important the truth is. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Keith Heck. I'm running for position two. And I feel like we've been doing this now for about four years and you might feel the same way. It's been going on a long time. November 7th, or even November 6th is just around the corner and I'm looking forward to it with great anticipation regardless. So it'll be nice when it is here so we know what we're going to do for the next six months or four years or whatever it is and however it works itself out. My wife and I moved here in 1996 out of Oklahoma. Proud to say, not out of California, but out of Oklahoma. And we came out here, we were active in different churches and then I got involved with the Gospel Roses Commission in 1997. July 15th, I started there in 1997. Retired from there at the end of December 31st of 2010. And in that process of time, having spent a lot of different energy levels on different community works and different community programs and working with different folks and it's hard for me in one sense to stand up and say, "Look at all the wonderful things I've accomplished." That's just, it just goes against my nature in one sense. But yet, on the other hand, I can also say, you can, you don't need to worry about, "What am I going to do?" You can look at the evidence of what I have done in the last 16 years we've been in Josephine County. And I obviously care about people, who want to work well with people, to try to bring people together from disparate points, working in a sense of facilitation of trying to get people to talk with one another, to look at things. The commissioners, you are a manager and you're not the job developer. You are the one that supports and works with and manages and facilitates those who are going to do the yielman's work. And I look forward to that opportunity to being your voices and your idea presenters and this kind of stuff. I'm not the answer. I'm not the answer to the problems. When people would ask, "What are you going to do for us?" I said, "I'm going to deliver you." But I will be your voices and I will try to stand and present ideas in the best way that I think can be presented. But the idea of running a county is not one person's job or three people's job. It's our job as citizens of Josephine County. And this is a corporate work, together work, that we need to rise up and do the task to make it possible. We've got a wonderful opportunity because we can't get too much worse off. So that's a nice, that's a good news. But it's going to take a lot of work and I don't mind the work, trust me with that. But together we can make it work and we can make a good outcome as we all pull together in the same direction instead of beating one another up and pulling in opposite directions to win our little argument of the day. So appreciate any support, any questions you might have. Happy to talk with you. And I trust you'll have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. My name's Bob Justin, running for position three. I, Damon said in the beginning, we're in a fiscal mess and I really resonate with that. And the problem is it's really more than mess. I mean, we Americans are used to messes. We understand cleaning out the barn. We understand, "Oh, your office has got a mess, you've got to clean the office." We understand, if you have a mess, you clean it up. We have something much worse than a mess. We have a mess where you go to one pile and it says, "No, you have to check with Salem." We go to another pile and says, "No, you have to check with the federal government or environmental ism groups." We really have a mess where everywhere you go to make a difference, someone's holding up their hand saying, "Stop." That's incredibly frustrating and it's demoralizing. I was out in Cave Junction for the Labor Day Fair and for three days I talked to people. And I'll tell you, you know, in the same thing here, there's no jobs, there's no hope for many, many people and no trust, no trust of leadership. So how do you get back? How do you change the situation if you don't even trust your county leadership? And I think a lot of that lack of trust is just the wearing down, it's not about the people in office so much as it is about the wearing down of the messes that you can't clean up. And so the question is, you know, what are we going to do about this situation? We have 20% of our counties, you know, as big as Rhode Island. We have 20% of our county lives in poverty. 30% of our county approximately is on food stamps. 70-plus percent, 73% of our county is controlled by the federal government. This is an untenable situation. Again, a mess that's hard to clean up. So let me throw something at you to consider about how we can turn this around. And I'll talk more about it as it develops. But it is possible to harvest our county timber. We've been talking about that on the Resource Committee connected to the SOS group, the Tuesday Night Criminal Justice Group. But more than a contract, we can actually have a deed where we can get money upfront. Now, immediate reaction to money upfront, a friend of mine said, "Money upfront, that means the government's going to spend it all." What we do is we leverage that money. We spend a portion of it for an immediate fix rather than go to the tax route, whether sales tax or levy, get an immediate fix, modest, controllable, but immediate fix on the criminal justice system and then leverage the rest to start to fight for our mineral resource rights. We have an impoverished county sitting on spectacular natural wealth. What's wrong with this picture? Thank you.
We'll open it up to any questions from the audience. Mr. Matthews?
Damon, let's go up very briefly with you from the beginning. If I could ask two questions of Keith Heck. He said, "Yes."
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Heck, I've seen you in action at a county meeting, at a county budget meeting. And you were nominated to be chair of that county budget committee. And after you were nominated, the temporary chair of it said, "Okay, we're going to shut that down." Sandy Castellano said, "Wait, wait, I've got someone to nominate." There would be two nominees. And that person said, "Well, let's keep going. We're going to go on, that's all." He says, "Wait, wait, I don't know how to say this right, but I'm trying to nominate somebody." "Oh, I'm trying to nominate somebody." So you went ahead and assumed the leadership. So is this the kind of county commissioner you're running as well?
I understand. I grew up in a sort of a rough, disheveled, rotten, little punky sort of life. And I got in Marine Corps for four years. I learned that either I was not the center of the universe and everybody genuflected that my two cents were, it has to be earned, learned this, certain lessons I had to learn. There are certain questions that just drive me to distraction and this is one of them. I'm one of six on the budget committee. One of six on the budget committee. The wrangling went on over something else, I don't even remember, obviously the chopped tittle man over here knows. But, you know, it went on with this thing and it took five people to vote yes or no. And I'm the lion to the slaughter because I'm the chairman of this budget committee. I was not, that was not my forte by any means. And I stepped in and I did it. But, so the argument was over, and I forget what the argument was over, some point of order or something or other. But yeah, so I must confess, I don't have any secrets to hide or some new management style I'm going to ram down your throat or some, you know, just, like I said, look at the last 15 years and you can see what my style is working with people and across the board, whatever it might be. But this kind of stuff, I don't even have a whole lot of time to acquiesce to it, so.
Here's the second question for Keith Heck. Thank you very much, Mr. Matthews. At that very first meeting, I sat for two hours and 40 minutes. I was the only person left in the audience and goal number one was audience participation. So when time came, I was the only person to stand up. I came up and I said, "Gosh, you guys got a lot of items on this." And you said, "Sit down, you're not on the topic." I would submit to you that talking about how many items you were on the agenda was the topic. I got 17 seconds and that was it. Is this the kind of commissioner you're going to?
We got started, we started at 4:00 with the budget committee. 4:35, the budget committee finally quit wrangling over the agenda. The wrangling over the agenda was basically one of the committee members' problems. So, okay, that's, we finally got it settled. So now we're 35 minutes late. So we got, went through the process and we actually got to the end of the meeting at 6:35, which I felt was reasonable in the sense that we got a 35-minute late start and so now we're ending 35 minutes late. There was no public individual in the audience with the exception of Mr. Matthews. There's the only, only public person there in that audience. Anybody have anything, want to say anything? Yes, okay. This, the restrictions were, you had to address the topic. There had to be, you're addressing some issue that had been discussed. And we started off with this chastising of how come this meeting is so out of control that we are having, we're starting so late and I, it was very disconcerting to me in the middle and I said, "Stop. Do you want to speak to something on the agenda or not? If you don't want to, then this is not the format for that. Would you like to speak to something?" His eyeballs got that big, he turned and walked out and that was the end of the meeting.
That's ridiculous.
Oh, my.
It's written, it's on the record, not taken.
Mr. Walker.
May I ask a question of each of candidates or do I have to address what you just want?
That's fine. Each of the candidates, yeah.
Okay. Here's my question to you. I believe you describe yourself in voter pamphlet, I'm telling you, as a moderate. I would like each one of you to describe yourself, categorize yourself in that, in whatever way you want, moderate, conservative, literarian, whatever. Give a brief overview so the rest of us know what you mean by that. And try to tailor your answer, if possible, to relative to what you think government ought to do and conversely, give anything what government ought not to do. Tony, I can start with you.
That's a long question. I'll tackle it first.
Be as terse as you can be. Because better you know you're terse, the better you give out the answer.
Yeah. I'll tackle it first and just can't wait to see how my comrades answer. I have seen in the counties and in the city, you know, certain things come on the agenda where we've given up our control. And, you know, a recent, you know, I would describe myself as a moderate, you know, I think less government is better. But government was set up for the benefit of the people and there are certain laws that we need to have. But I'm not in favor of a law to address every situation that comes up. I think it's gotten, definitely gotten out of control. Could you just refresh me a little bit on this?
I would like to tailor maybe towards what you think government ought to do, what is the proper process of role of government and if, if there's anything that's not not to do in particular. You don't have to go on, just a couple of examples perhaps.
Yeah. Basically, I think there are certain laws and rules that are helpful to have for a society to function well. And beyond that, I think people should have as much freedom as possible.
Thank you.
I think if I remember correctly, you said in the front that all of us had described something about being a moderate or something.
No, I'm asking you to describe yourself.
Okay. Okay. Because I didn't describe myself. I've described myself to meetings when I go as I'm pragmatic, I'm analytical, and I look at each problem. And whatever that problem requires for a solution, I try to find as many potential solutions and narrow it down to those who are the most probable solutions and then try to find one that will work. So I don't, you know, to me it's not moderate, conservative or anything. It's pragmatic and practical. And as far as the role of government, when I look at the role of government, I said this a long time ago, even when I was running for the legislature, which has been almost 12 years now, that public safety is number one, public health is number two, and public education is number three. And everything that we do in government should fit in those categories. We should not be branching out and doing too many things for too many people because we simply can't afford to do that. And I think that's why we've had trouble funding our government at all levels recently. It's because we've tried to reach out and do too many things. So if we focus, and particularly in our county right now, public safety is the critical one. County commissioners have no jurisdiction over public education, so that would not be one that the commissioners would consider. And the public health, we do have a public health department which we would need to focus on to make sure we provide the services necessary, which right now also includes the animal control department. Thank you.
Yeah, Mark Sullivan. I can say myself a libertarian, which means less government. The mindset of most people who run for commissioners is, "Well, now that I got in government, I need to govern, I need to do things." Well, I don't believe that. I believe that there's too many laws and people who get in the government should step back and say, "Is this really necessary?" That's really difficult when you have county staff or city staff wanting you to do stuff, which means more revenue for the county or the city and less, and more regulations. That's not libertarian. A great example of that is county meetings that are no longer televised due to the present Board of Commissioners. The people are in the dark, so they don't know what's going on. Not one candidate here, except for maybe Tony Webb, has come out and has said, "These televised meetings are really important to freedom of society. Public safety, it is important." On the other hand, all of these candidates, every single one of them was for tax levies. You may have a couple of Johnny Comelatleys here now, but I've been against it. So in other words, when you're in government, you must listen to the people. None of these candidates listened to the people. Now that the people voted, maybe they'll listen. You have one candidate that I'm running against that's a tax and spend, a balloon regulator. The other one's a tax and spend conservative. You cannot have this hypocrisy. You're either for more government or for less government. And I'm for less government.
One of the nice things about these four offices that you, you find yourself agreeing with people that you go, "You're agreeing with them?" Like with Mark, bless him. You know, I have to agree, you know, you have to agree with the idea. I want to talk about less government. I'm very, very supportive of that. Cheryl, position three, the public safety, public health. Yeah, okay, I mean, that's to me, that's the primary responsibility. The primary responsibility of government is not to intrude, not to be the prime caretaker and safety provider for you, all that kind of stuff. I mean, the government is us in a corporate way, working together for us. It is not somehow some third arm that rules now and regulates regardless of how we want to feel about certain things. So it's, you know, I've gone the spectrum, when I got out of the Marine Corps in 1963, I was a right-wing nutcase and about six weeks later I became a left-wing radical, or actually registered as a socialist in Orange County, California. And I actually went to a John Birch Society meeting in Orange County and they invited me to leave. So that was, but then I had a real brief hiatus for that and then I basically then re-registered as a Republican. I've been a US Taxpayers Party man down in Oklahoma, but we got the US Taxpayers Party on the ballot in Oklahoma, and I'm now registered as a Republican. I enjoy the fact this is a nonpartisan position because it allows me latitude across the spectrum.
I love this question. I'm a conservative, Reagan conservative, Tea Party Reagan Democrat. All of those things, by the way, mean essentially the same thing. I wrote a column for World Net Daily called, "We're Reagan's New Patriots," and it was about the Tea Party, but it directly related to what Reagan stood for and why the Tea Party really represents the Second Reagan Revolution. Ronald Reagan, one of his favorite, famous quotes is, "Man is not free unless government is limited." And when my opponent talks about public safety and public health and public education, really you can drive a truck through that in terms of overreaching government. Government has to respect, in our country, we're a nation under God, which means our rights come from God, which means government can't take them away. That's a crucial point and anyone who thinks that's a given is not following what's happening in the left in this country because they do not think that's a given. I think it's very important that government stay out of the private sector as much as possible. That doesn't mean no regulations. Common sense tells you there must be some regulations. But the principle it is, the private sector is the driving force of our free market system. The individual is what created the government collectively and the government should remember that as much as possible. It is we, the people, that created the government. Government is there to protect and pretty much stay out of our lives as much as possible. There's more to it and I'll get to it later.
Lady in the back.
Yes, my concern, and I see the configuration on the board now.
What?
President?
I see.
Post-adjournant, okay. I, oh, okay. That's fine. I want to, what do you folks think about more transparency on the board that, that when you take your oath to deliver to the people? Do you believe in more transparency or do you believe what's going on in our county?
Do I all of it?
Yeah, all of it.
Start.
I think there should be more transparency. There's some things we all know, there are executive sessions and there's some, some things for reasons of privacy issues and stuff like that that have to be not in, layer in light of the public. But there should be, for example, union negotiations should be in the light of the public. People need to know what's going on, talking to public employee unions. Those negotiations are here too for private, but I think they should be public. And part of the reason is, what I was talking about before, is that we have a serious lack of trust amongst the people. Part of the reason we have a lack of trust, by the way, is our political arenas become so ugly. You can have a person who runs on a pretty reasonable community reputation and the first instinct of the opponent is to begin to tear down the reputation. And what is that person left with after the political arena? Why do you suppose so many people don't get in the political arena? Because it is so ugly. And what does that lead to? That leads to trick distrust. And naturally, the people want to know what's going on in their government. So I'm absolutely for as much transparency as possible. Thank you.
Transparency, yeah, I've talked about this before. I think we ought to have commissioner meetings, bimonthly, quarterly, and spread them out to different parts of the county. Have a meeting in Williams or in Cave Junction or in the Sunny Valley, Wolf Creek. I've proposed having five different city council or area councils that would be representative of those areas, like Sunny Valley, Wolf Creek, Cave Junction, Williams, maybe two in the city of Grants Pass area, in the urban growth boundary as well, to be sounding boards and echoing back. In other words, they would be the conduit for their area, their community, and what's going on, to be able to have contact with them on an open basis. But I do think the commissioners have to get out of the building in a formal sense and to be able to talk with people in an informal sense. And so I'm very concerned about wanting to open up that window as much as possible that we can open it up anyway.
As far as transparency, this present Board of County Commissioners is a great example of lack of transparency. You cannot watch your government in action. They don't want you to watch them because then you might have a real opinion. That's based on reality. You read the newspaper and you think, "Well, I read in the newspaper, it must be so." Well, it's not so. So in a sense, what this county government is doing is taking away your right to know. Now, I for one, implore that transparency, and if I'm elected commissioner... Now, I for one, am for that transparency, and if I'm elected commissioner, I will urge the other two commissioners to vote to put these back on TV. Now, here's another example of hypocrisy of government. Bob just speaks of lack of trust, but yet he doesn't get specific on a county level. I will. You got $4.7 million from the federal government, and now we're dilly-dallying how we're going to use it. It was an emergency when all these people were for a tax levy. Now it's not? Where's that $4.7 million? Why is this being used right now? It's really important that we use it now, not later. County government does itself a disservice by not letting people know what's going on. And, you know, until that happens, people are going to keep voting no, because they don't believe in this government and its lack of transparency.
Transparency has become a buzzword, and it means a little bit different things to different people. But to me, transparency means that when you have prepared an agenda for your county commissioner's meeting, you don't just put one liners with one or two words and abbreviate or acronyms on there. You need to put at least two or three lines of explanation as to exactly what that is. So when someone pulls it up on their computer or takes the agenda out of the rack in the courthouse, they'll know exactly what's on there and not be surprised or miss something that was critically important. The other thing is access is budget. The budget is very complex. They've prepared one of these analytical-type books that's supposed to simplify it. I looked at that book, and because I can do budgets, I can read it, but there's an awful lot of people that can't. It is very complex, and because public accounting is very complex as well. But I think it needs to be simplified even more. One of those things has to do with the Internal Service Fund. Internal Service Fund, a lot of people don't know what it is or where it goes, and it certainly isn't very well explained or very well tracked within the county. And that Internal Service Fund, which is now 10% of any given department's budget, each department doesn't have the same overhead costs. Some cost more than other, but they take that out of their budget, which is, they give it to them, and then they take it back. So when you have that process taking place in the accounting, it tends to inflate the budget and then is not accounted for. And perhaps, most recently, was the $50,000 that the commissioners kept for Internal Service Fund at the Sheriff's Department. That was already factored into the budget, so why do they take an additional $50,000? I don't think that's appropriate, and certainly wasn't transparent.
As far as transparency in government, that's actually an issue that I would address immediately. And I have been going to the commission meetings and addressing the issue. Since March, when I started campaigning, registered, started campaigning, I've met so many people in the county that have skills and experience and education that could benefit the county in moving forward, but they don't know about what is on the agenda. Just like Cheryl said, there's often just a one-line description with an acronym. I remember going on one time, and the agenda item was discussion of MOU, and there was nothing else on there. And you would have no idea what that was, and it's a very important issue with several state agencies. One of the things, of course, I think the media should be televised. When the televising went dark, I got calls from people in Cave Junction and Wolf Creek. And I can't afford to drive into Grants Pass two or three times a week to see the meetings. And I would go even further. I don't think they, I mean, the televising shouldn't just be limited to Charter, but they should be on the satellite channels also and accessible on the website of the county. The advisory boards is another area that I think there should be transparency. The county has about a dozen advisory boards. Most counties in the state list the advisory boards and when the terms are up, and we need to do that also.
I'd like each candidate to tell us how they would solve the problem with the Sheriff's Department, jail, and the district attorney. How can you happen, we have permanent funding, and I'll have to rely on hoping we'll get federal funding every year.
Musical chairs. Musical chairs, all right. What I have put on here are some ideas for what I'm going to do for the county for better efficiencies in the county, and some of those have to do with sharing with other counties. And I think we have some opportunity here with our jail as far as sharing and renting beds and that kind of thing. So that's one thing. This idea has already been out there. Securing our safety organization. They're working on several areas of revenue streams and actions to bring in more revenue. I'm very hopeful that that group will bring those forward. And I think their goals of having something on the ballot by May is a very good one. I think it's certainly very realistic as well. So when that comes as a community group, there's almost 400 people that belong to that group. They're all community-oriented, and I think that that's important for the county commissioners to pay attention to what the commissioners, the community members bring forward to the commissioners. So I would look at that first. The other thing is that here in the county, when our levy failed, which was the $1.99, people told me that that was because that was a large pot of money going to about several different things, and they thought that money could be moved around and not go for what they actually needed or wanted. So I have proposed a menu plan where we will put each item separately for people to look at and to vote on. It would be jail, it would be sheriffs, it would be the court. You know, those all would be listed separately, so people would know that the money would go exactly to what they want it to go for.
Could you repeat that question?
How can we permanently fund the sheriff, county jail, and district attorney? Public safety?
Okay. First of all, what's really ironic here is I was the only one that campaigned against fixed tax levy, and now that we got $4.7 million from the federal government, the commissioners are diddling around with how to spend it. This is what this money was for. It was an emergency when they wanted your tax dollars, but now it's not an emergency. It's like putting a tourniquet on someone halfway. Well, they're still bleeding. Permanent funding? I don't believe, this county is outtaxed. I don't think we can tax our people anymore. In terms of permanent funding, I believe the federal money will continue. I think the FASIO and WIDE are working on something where all the secure rural counties in America are banding together to make sure that the money that's due us, and it's not welfare, it's timber payments. They took our lands from us, so we can't develop them, so they always, this money, it's not welfare. That's the way this county gets money. This SOS, all this is, is another front for property taxes. And I guarantee you that in May, you're going to see on your ballot a different level of tax. Maybe not $1.99, maybe $49. So the reality is, I support the sheriff getting more money than any of these candidates, and I was the one that was against it, because we cried for this money, and we got $4.7 million, and they're not using it. You cannot expect homeowners on fixed incomes to pay any more than they're paying now. That's most of the people in this county. So that's, I'm sorry, you're not going to be able to get full funding, but you're going to get some.
Your question is the fly in the ointment, because, I mean, there is no, there is no one-step solution to solving the problem. It just isn't. So it's got to be a consortium of different ideas and different plans, and people pulling together and moving in the same direction, rather than sort of getting my share, running off, and doing whatever we're going to do with it. Yeah, like Mark says, they got $4.7 million. Well, we needed 12 million to just keep things going as they had been. So, you know, it's, you're going to die this week, or you're going to die next week. I prefer not to die. So let's figure out how we're going to solve the health problem, and that's where the funding situation. SOS, which Mark doesn't have a whole lot of support for, but he's never been to one of the meetings either, but at this point, is a wide spectrum of the community members trying to come up with different solutions to try to solve a problem. I'm not so smart that I look at and say, I go, that won't work. I like to have as many issues and many, many solutions and many ideas presented, and we can work and talk about it, to see whether the tax is going to develop or not, rather than just cutting off the thing, oh, that's a dumb idea. Okay, so let's look at it. Might be a dumb idea, it might be a good idea. But we need ideas, and we need to have the freedom to talk about things without feeling as if we are going to be nailed to the wall because of some thing that we said, or somebody's going to remember that, if you said that, I remember back in '66. You know, it's very messed up.
Yeah, I resonate with what Keith said. It's a serious question, not an easy answer. And the securing our safety meetings, I've been to most of them, going back to the beginning. And there are many different committees, and there are serious people in those committees. So it shouldn't be made light of. And I know there's, I disagree with sales tax, but there's very good and hard work being done on that. I don't know that there's a levy committee, but in any event, the point is, I do think that the drift is to the easy answer for too many people in leadership, and that is taxes of one form or another. I think out of the resource committee, which is part of SOS, so if, I think it's a spectacular possibility for us as a county to turn ourselves around, and that has, in respect, that has come out of the resource committee, which is part of the, is secure our safety meetings. I think that the first question when it comes to the criminal justice system, as with, by the way, other county services, is how much service do we want as people of Josephine County, and what are we willing to pay for? Now, that is a classic free market question. How much service do I want, and at what cost? That's where the negotiation and the big community discussion has to be, okay? Now, I do believe that an upfront timber deed could really raise some interesting questions, and I'll get to it.
Yeah, I think all of us candidates have seen over the months that there isn't a quick fix for this, and we've all been part of the Security and Safety Task Force in exploring different ideas. I mean, as you know, it's only 58 cents, and it's the lowest in the state that we're paying for the property tax. B, and I agree with Mark that the people on fixed incomes, the unemployed, can't really afford an increase at this point. I think it was today in the Courier, yesterday, that the state said that the unemployment is a little over 12% in the county. So to, I think people who have jobs are more likely to want to pass an increase in property tax, and I think that is something that needs to be done in the future, an increase in property tax. And so again, my focus is to improve the economy and bring more jobs here. There has been talk of possibly the state lottery funds being used to fund some of public safety. The timber deed that was mentioned, that group has estimated that this timber deed 10-year contract could bring possibly $40 million into the county coffers, and it would be paid within a few years. I've been meeting with the environmentalists and conservationists, several of whom I grew up with around here, so, and trying to get people to come to a common ground. The environmentalists have been affected by the lack of public safety also. Thank you.
I don't have a question. It's two-part. One, about transparency. I realize that, Bob, that you have, I believe, three tax exempt organizations you talked about before. Can we, is it possible to see some of the records on those? That's question number one. Number two, that people call me, and they're very concerned about your relationship with Roy Masters, who many people consider a cult leader, and could you explain that a little bit?
Yes, certainly. Yeah, I brought up the Masters issue in the first, in one of the debates last spring. I came up here to Mark Masters, Roy Masters' son, one of the sons hired me to come up here. I've been, you know, connected to the Masters Foundation in the 80s as well, listened to him on the radio, along with many other radio counselors and ministers, people like Dr. D. James Kennedy. And, yeah, I donated to the foundation. It's part of my Christian walk, and something that actually had a significant positive impact, along with people like D. James Kennedy and Adrian Rogers and many, many more mainstream Christian leaders. I helped, this is, I guess, I'm going to make it quick. There's more to it. I came up to work for New Dimensions Magazine, ended up working for Talk Radio Network. I think it's a shame, the ugliness that's developed out of that one issue. Part of it is rooted in truthful bad things that happened in the early 1980s, which, let's face it, that's 30 years ago. And, well, I think a lot of people are sick of it and want to move on, and that's where I'm coming from. Nonprofit, Concerned Fathers Against Crime is a nonprofit group. I'm trying to think of the others you're applying, but certainly, nonprofit groups, their records are, and they're public records.
Yeah. We need jobs in this county, and the natural resources of this county is one of the richest we got in the whole nation. I want to know how we can start getting the natural resources going to get the jobs to fix all these problems, and I'd like to know how you can do that for all of you.
How we can get all the jobs? We have a magic wand, and hold our gun in our left mouth, and stomp it twice, we'll get all the jobs. Jobs is a process that takes place. First of all, you've got to identify, is there an opportunity for jobs? Okay, that's what this committee of resources is about. I mean, they're trying to come up and identify, can we cut more trees? Well, the county owns 30,000 acres, about 25,000 of them are forested. So right now, we take about a million and a half wood feet a year off of that, $870,000 profit. Of course, the overhead is $800,000, and we make about $70,000 worth of income. Not what you call a wise business option. So is there a different way to look at this thing? Yeah, and that's what they're talking about, different opportunities, different ways to do things. Now, you know as well as I do, there's enough regulations in the world to strangle, you know, the elephant. Those things have to be addressed, but they're not going to be addressed overnight. One of the things that we have a long-term and a short-term issue as far as funding. Short-term solution is not something that is able to be done in six years. Something might happen, but that's okay. What's happened now, and some of these things, with this forestry situation, is a short-term solution. Can it be done? I hope so. We're trying to see if, see if it works, and see if it's possible. But there's all kinds of options, but we have to be willing to work and to pull together in the same direction for a consistent period of time to make those things happen.
I'm all for responsible mining and responsible logging for jobs, but, you know, you can have all the groups in the world. The reality about Josephine County, and it's really hard for people to get this, this place has always been poor. Yes, it was better when logging and mining was happening more. The only way that this county ever does better is when the people who sell their California homes for $700,000 come here, buy a place in Jerome Prairie for $250,000, and hire all these people. This is, you can have the job council tell you how to write a resume, and all these programs. The money is not here. We must conserve what we have. Now, if you're in a land of prosperity, where I used to come from, Sonoma County, which is near San Francisco, or a community near Portland, it's a different story. This is a little cocoon that we're in. We can't have, Bob just makes a good point. There's no hope, no trust, no jobs. But on the other hand, he's stocking you with property taxes. That's unconscionable. Now, you know, I hate to paint a bad picture, but you have to deal with what you have. Now, what's coming up here in the next few years, we don't know. We could have another recession. What are you going to do then? Well, we have to make ourselves strong. We have to learn how to provide for ourselves. But, you know, there's only so much you can do in this little cocoon. So I wish I could have good news for you, but this is reality. And all the candidates in the world can say all the polemics they want, but that is reality. We're in a tough situation.
Well, I have a lot more hope than that, and I have a positive attitude, because we have a lot of entrepreneurial people in this county, and we have a lot of very ambitious young people who are trying to establish themselves in this community, and I think it's important for the county commissioners that advocate for this county. They have not done that. That is not a required job of a commissioner, but by their position and the very power that is in that job, they need to advocate. And we can't rely on the federal government to bail us out, and I think it's And we can't rely on the federal government to bail us out, and I think it's important that we have the leadership, which I intend to provide for this county, to move forward. We must continue to work for the right to harvest our forests. We must continue to have the right to not exploit, but to use all of our natural resources, whether it's our river, our trees, the mining, whatever it is, and we have to do it responsibly. And I plan to do that, I will do that. And the other thing that we need to do is, we need to look at what we have in our young people. If we have young people here that are graduating and leaving, that's, we're leaving, we're losing all of our ambition and all of our potential for the future. We need to work, as county commissioners, with the businesses we already have here, to have mentoring programs, or programs, after-school programs, or job-type work programs further to go to at those employers, because we do have employers here that can provide opportunities for some of these young people. And I do know a couple who already do that in this area, but I think more could. But again, it comes down to the commissioners providing the leadership and advocating for this county, and being out there in front to provide opportunity for the people who are trying to provide for the community.
I believe your question wasn't specifically about the mineral resources. So, and I've gone to some of the miners meetings out in Huntsville, and I'll be a strong advocate for the minerals in the county. Several, a couple weeks ago, at a commissioners meeting, actually Chairman Walker and I took, we were aside with Michael Cole, who's been trying to get county permission, or county permission, to explore on the Martha Mine, which he feels would be profitable, perhaps to the $2 billion in fees to the county. And we were talking with him about how to go through the application process, because evidently the county lost its application. The other, I think you have a strength that I bring to that specific issue, is that when I was living in Los Angeles, I worked for Anderson Consulting, and I worked on a project with the mining and metals industry, and we brought about a dozen of the top mining companies to Los Angeles to work on a business, to business website that they were setting up, and I saw firsthand that those companies, like Rio Tinto and Alcan and Reynolds, are extremely powerful, and I would be a county advocate to make sure the business and the profit from that stays in the county and is not overtaken by one of the giant mineral companies.
Yeah, that's a great question, and it goes to what I started with. I'm not kidding when I say we have a genuine opportunity to think outside the box with the leveraged timber deed that I started out the evening talking about. And Tony's right, I've heard 40 million, I've heard more modestly, 33 million. It really depends on the timber deed you do, you can do, I spoke to Rough and Ready about this, you can get, you can do a five-year timber deed, so it depends on a bunch of things. The amount of money, the key to that is the amount of money upfront, and what you do with it. And I feel very strongly that the mineral wealth in this county is something we absolutely have to, excuse your question, dig into. The Governor Martin in the 1930s said that he thought that Josephine County could be the financial engine of Oregon because of its natural resource wealth. The Martha Mine in the early eighties, Cambyer Mining Company, spent $2 million researching the Martha Mine, and the only reason the deal went through, didn't go through, as I hear about, is we were, as a county, we were trying to play hardball in our negotiations. But guess what? Their plan was to build a $64 million, this is early eighties money, processing plant. That's went away because of foolish negotiation. By the way, gold was minuscule in its value back then. We are sitting on a gold mine. I'd like to hear from each candidate what government experience you have as far as working in the government and working with budgets, and creating budgets. I've had no experience working with the government or working with government budgets, but I've sat in on many meetings, seeing how the county commissioners act, and I've run a business for 35 years, it's a small business, and I've talked to many people who are affected by county budgets and are having a really hard time. So, you know, I'm assuming that your question has something to say that you gained a certain amount of expertise when you prepare county budgets. Well, we have to quit listening to the experts. We're in a so-called shortfall right now, because these county commissioners didn't plan for the inevitable. Those are the people who have the experience, and this is where we're at. These county commissioners who have this so-called experience continually vote to put this on the agenda, on the ballot, property taxes, and they know it's going to fail, and it always fails, and they literally have sabotaged this county by their experience. So, you know, I think you need to look, I hate the word "outside the box," but you need to be critical of government when it continuously fails you and puts you in a position that you're uncomfortable with. Of course, you may not be uncomfortable with it, and life goes on, then you're happy with it. So, that's for each individual. A person in Cape Junction might think differently than a person in Grants Pass, so, you know, that's the only thing I can, just because you're an expert doesn't mean you're right.
My budget experience expands my entire employment career. I worked for the federal government with the USDA, where I was the chief contracts officer for the entire state that I was in, which was Arizona at that time, where I had to analyze all the budgets of loan applicants and all of the sewer water projects that I mentioned that I managed before as well, as well as farm loans. I also had to analyze all the construction contracts for labor compliance to make sure wages and payroll were appropriate. I was also a bank commercial and agriculture load officer, where I had to do the ratio analysis on the loans for the bank. And I was also on the Josephine County Budget Committee. That was about 10 years ago, and I served in the state legislature, where I was co-chair of the Revenue Committee. So, as a kid going to school, where I didn't really care much for math, I ended up doing a lot of budgets and doing a lot of math in my career.
Yeah, like Mark, I've been going to the city council meetings and the county commission meetings, and a few months ago, I became a commissioner for the City of Grants Pass on the Historic Buildings and Sites Commission. And as far as budget, I had three small businesses, which I've run, you know, with a budget, of course, and I currently have a marketing business. And then I will, my other budget experience is in corporate, and I worked in Los Angeles for a corporation that was a billion-dollar capitalized on the New York Stock Exchange, and I did the investor relations, and we had a very lean management level. And so, I just will read to you, bear with me, I'm sorry, I did so many things. Everyone had many, many jobs at that company. I prepared the financial information for the 10K and the 10Q that went to the SEC and the New York Stock Exchange. I researched and prepared cost analysis reports for sales of subsidiary businesses. I recorded the employee stock option grants, exercises, and terminations. I provided periodic reports to senior management on the employee stock option program. I managed the sales suite consisting of 230 cars. I negotiated the rates and terms, and I can see, I'm not going to get through this list. I did the government reports for our overseas offices, which were 80 overseas offices. So, I'll stop at that.
I've paid my rent for the last 16 years. No, I took over the mission with a $270,000 budget in the mission. And when I left in December 31st of 2010, it was a $1.2 million budget. So, seeing all that, operating, seeing, participating in the raising of funds for it, all that there, as far as budgeting and allocating, all that kind of stuff, so, you know, I had some experience in that. To say, we don't want to overlook the county guy, I mean, the county folks are the ones who jiggle all those numbers, and they're the ones that present them. I, as a county commissioner, would be responsible to read and to figure and to look and to see whether all these things are realistic or not. I've been on the Budget Committee the last two years for the Josephine County Budget Committee, so I have a lot of hands-on, so to speak, awareness of what's going on. But yet, there are men and women that are there in the county that are, have degrees and experience, many years of experience, in handling budgets and figures and that kind of stuff. But you have to be able to work with them and to let them know that you're not out to try to gouge them or do whatever. But, so I've had that kind of experience. Never been involved in a government job in my life.
I do, I have no government experience and no big budget experience. I actually think, I mean, if you look back at the history of the county and the different commissioners we've had, we've had plenty of people that have had that kind of experience, and here we are. We really need a new kind of leadership. I know, you know, a lot of people have trouble understanding that. We really are in a new paradigm. In other words, there's a new situation that we have, and I'm serious about this. This is not just campaigning or answering a debate point. We have a, you know about the purse, probably read the herd today, $900 billion purse shortfall. We have a federal government that's just gone over $16 trillion in debt, okay? We are used to a spigot of money coming from the state and from the federal government, and that spigot is going to turn down. That's not even touching what might happen with the dollar with the international scene. We are in a dangerous situation economically, and we're going to need commissioners that can think outside the box, that is an important expression in this case. We need someone, and I'm very passionate about this, to who will organize, has the skills to organize the private sector, and if that means getting accountants involved, that means getting accountants involved, but organize the private sector to change the game in this county, and I think it can be done.
Everybody talks about responsible use of natural resources, and responsible use of natural resources. You do different things for different people. Yes. Okay. So, what I would like to ask is, what do each of these commissioner candidates feel is responsible use of our natural resources here in the county? What level of usage would you like to see for both timber and mining in our county?
Okay, well, I think responsible use of the natural resources, the timber and the mining and the biomass, is so regulated at this point, at the state and federal level, that we should allow the mining and timber logging to go. There are plenty of regulations, and they have to do studies beforehand, and studies afterhand, and, you know, I feel that the processes are in place, and I'm working now toward bringing together the different factions, the environmentalists, the loggers, the miners, to come to a common ground, so that the environmentalists won't sue. I think that's the important point. And with the county lands, they're not inclined to sue because they don't get their lawyer's fees back when they sue on the federal level. So, I think there are a number of regulations in place that we can move ahead and start mining and logging responsibly.
When I refer to responsible use of resources, whether it's timber, mining, or any other resource that we have, whether it's water, anything, is where we use it where it is sustainable. We can't go in and harvest all the trees at one time just because we need a large sum of money right now. We need to make sure that we are not over-using resources we have. The same thing in the mining industry. Right now, we don't have an actual current assessment of what we have. The information that Tony was talking about, that Michael was giving us, is information that has come from the past, which is reliable, but we need to update that information so that we're able to go forward and do it responsibly without taking too much and then leaving the devastation behind. That's what I mean by responsible.
I'm for responsible mining, responsible logging. Years ago, there was irresponsible logging. There was clear-cutting of hillsides. I was one who was affected by that. My house kept by a mudslide because of irresponsible logging. So, the regulations now have gone the other way. Myself was a one-time environmentalist that you probably would not like. Well, now, I look at where I live in Illinois Valley, and I see a dysfunction of family because there's no jobs, and in the past, there were jobs. Environmentalists like to say, well, you know, if you're cutting your arm off, it's like cutting a tree, it's the same shit. Well, I disagree with that. I see people who are out of work, and that creates dysfunction of families, so my feeling that it was years ago isn't what it is anymore. We need jobs here, we have natural resources, they should be used, but it should not go back to the way it was, clear-cutting a whole hillside. I'd still be opposed to that, but we have to provide people. So, you know, dysfunction of family is where I'm coming from. We need to create these jobs again, otherwise, it's going to cost us more in society.
There's no way that something is going to be cleared-cut next week in Josephine County, because this is not going to happen. Too many laws and arguments and that kind of stuff. But lest we forget, I mean, as you look around, all these hills were clear-cut 125, 134, 150 years ago, I mean, they've all been clear-cut, but they grow, that's the thing about trees, it's amazing. And so, that is a renewable resource, that's the idea, that you want to go off and raise all of the growing that's ever going to be done? Well, no. You have to be responsible in a sense, and you have to plan for the usage of it. 1994 was the last time an audit was done on how much wood there really is to be used in the 30,000 acres that Josephine County owns. We own 30,000 acres, 25,000 is harvestable, but, okay, so how much wood is really on that land? We really don't know, we guesstimate, but we really don't know. So, a wise usage presupposition, I don't believe that man was made for the resources. The resources were made for man to use. We have to use them responsibly in the sense of renewable, you can't use them all up, you can't waste them, you can't do a whole lot of stuff, but the challenge is, 500,000 acres burned to the ground in Josephine County not too many years ago. That wood was that harvested? No. It was burned up and was destroyed. We couldn't go out and, we couldn't even go out and pick up the dead stuff because of all the arguments. But we've got to begin that process, realistically process through, and come to some realistic solutions that are mutually agreeable without backing down.
Well, to the issue of the timber deed first, you can't harvest everything now, I mean, it's not physically possible, and besides, a timber deed is a, you know, you make a deal, you work it out, it has to be harvested by Oregon Forest Practices. You're not, you know, you still have, you know, laws in place, and very reasonable people that you can negotiate with and figure it out. The point is, the point is getting the money upfront. And Keith's right, talking about the inventorying, with our county forests, about 25,000 acres haven't been inventoried since 1993, so we don't even know the wealth we have on the county forests. Now, there's some people that, you know, don't want to cut any tree down, you know, there are people like that, but, and for them, sustainable has an entirely different definition than it does for me. But I would ask you, what about sustainable communities? What about sustainable jobs? I mean, when do we really register as a community, and I mean with the leadership, not just you folks, but when do we really register that we have a lot of really suffering people in this county? And it's time to get moving and not play the same old games that we play in politics and raise taxes and all of that. It's time that we really start to rethink our problems. Thank you.
If I could ask a three-part question, very short to the point, yes or no, if you support it or not? First part of the question is, do you support the resources that we have and stop putting a bridle on the people that live in this community and help and stand with them to work against the federal government to take back what we have? Yes or no? All the candidates first.
Well, when you talk about taking back resources from the federal government...
Well, when you talk about taking back resources from the federal government, it depends on how you do it. Some ways, yes. Some ways, no. So it's the method. I have to know the method.
Generally, I'd probably agree with you. Yes, I think we should take a stand. The federal government took our land, and they're not providing us with the money that we deserve. It's not welfare. So, yeah, I would say that.
Same thing with all the visels around. Yes.
Yeah, no, I'd rather, do I have to give a yes or no answer? The answer is yes. The answer is yes, but I'd like to talk further. I think it's central. I think it's central. We're all friends. I think it's central. The fight that the question implies, the struggle for our natural resource rights, is central to our reclaiming our county. We're not going to reclaim our county by raising taxes. So what are we going to do, okay? If you stop and register what I said about a Martha mine on county property, that a company thirty years ago, when gold was like that much worth, spent two million dollars and was planning to build, you know, what did I say? Fifty million dollar, sixty million dollar processing plant. Imagine that now with gold at seventeen hundred dollars an ounce. We have to really face up to the fact that we're in a different situation than we were in the nineties. And unfortunately, too many people running for office now would be better as commissioners in the nineties. It isn't the nineties anymore.
Can I have a little more time to answer this question?
Tony, answer this.
Yes or no questions? Just follow the yes or no.
Yes, yes.
The other part of this, this yes or no question.
Is there a yes or no?
Yes, yes or no. That's what I just wanted, yes or no? One end to the other. Do you support the groups that have caused better than eighty percent of our problem here? And I mean the activist groups. We have these problems. They don't live here, they rent here. We live here. Do you support the people in this community against the accusations and suits that they file against us? Yes or no?
I do not support those groups. I do not support those groups. I think that they have done real damage to this country and to this county.
I think the right answer is yes to your question.
If you're referring to KS Wild, I don't support them. I think the question I want to ask here, the people to consider, Bob just brings up, he's not for raising taxes. I will ask him straight up. Are you or are you not for raising property taxes? He says that's not the way. Well, I would like to have a straight answer. I think we all would like to know because...
Happy to do it. Whatever you say.
I have another question. Answer the next.
As I answered the question the other day at the other meeting, I've never been a member of those groups. I don't support those groups, and I do support the community.
Do you have twenty seconds? It's so complicated. I think those groups do some good things for the environment, but I don't support their lawsuits against our claiming our natural resources. And I don't think they should be funded with government money. Many of those groups, they get eighty to ninety percent of their money from government grants.
What would you do to reduce the cost of government services?
Yeah, reduce the cost of government services? Well, I should actually audit each and every governmental agency to see how they're wasting money, because they all are wasting money. Rosemary Pageant, who is the chief financial officer, has been caught many times by Dale Matthews at meetings with, you know, wasting money. A great example is, they wanted to put some sheriff's patrol cars that were out of commission now. They had a program where they were going to do things, spend money on these patrol cars.
Radios.
What was that?
Radios.
Radios. And they were no longer, so I mean, that's just one example. When you come to county meetings, you're able to see this on TV, you would see how the county is wasting your money. The public needs to learn this first. When the public learns this, then what you're looking for will happen, because you'll all come to the meetings and you'll say, hey, wait a minute, you're wasting money. You must question government. If you don't question government and you believe the Daily Courier or what the commissioners say, you'll never know the truth. Please come to meetings. Please urge them to be televised. Without that, you're in the dark. So I am for streamlining county government and making sure you know what's going on.
Streamlining, I mean, it would be, what do you, what do you mean by streamlining? I mean, there's always the, there's always, the department's got some, you know, whatever. But I mean, when you, when you cut back the budget from a rather large amount to a very low amount, it's difficult to say, okay, what we need is, we need to, we need to stop painting the walls or whatever. There's always ways that you can not do something, but also that you realize at your own house, if you don't keep that fraction of the driveway sealed up every year, you're going to have to replace a driveway. So that's part of the problem center too. The biggest amount of money is spent on salaries and benefits. That's the biggest amount of money. There you get into a head-banging contest for the realities of the unions, but it's a difficult situation. Bob mentioned, one of the things that I certainly would support is that in union negotiations, it only takes one side to ask for a public hearing in the review of budget. To me, that's, I'm also conflicted. But I heard that, and I'm going, you've got to be kidding me. Why haven't we done it in the past? Okay, if we haven't done it in the past, it would be done if I'm there. I would demand that this is an open meeting of reviewing the budgets and salaries. I love Blaise. I think he's the finest people in the world, all that kind of stuff. He's one of my best friends. The lowest-paid deputy in Josephine, in Cape Junction, the lowest-guided poll, salary and benefits makes ninety-three thousand dollars a year. I think that's excessive.
Yeah, just, I, the transparency is necessary. I mean, there's an argument on the other side, but I don't think it holds sway. And that is that if you keep it private, we can talk amongst ourselves, and we don't have to get in trouble with our union members because we're, no, it has to, it has to be, let the light in, shed the light on. I recommend to you all that you Google Sandy Springs, Georgia YouTube and watch it. You'll find it very interesting. It talks about private-public partnership model. And very interesting, really, you know, level-headed people who are tired of things going the way they were, and they just rethought the whole thing. Privatization, I mean, from the very beginning in the debates, I have said that everything is up for discussion. And that has to really be our attitude. Everything is up for discussion. Doesn't mean that we'll go with sales tax or we'll go with levy. Doesn't mean we're going to go with one thing or another. But let's get, let's shed some light on it. And one of the things we definitely need to shed light on is, you know, some kind of public-private partnership model. You can hire managing partner companies that, that will take more than one thing on and supervise the subcontractors. Now, you know, we can be skeptical or cynical about this, but we need to engage in those conversations.
Okay, well, as I said earlier, I spent a lot of the summer meeting with the county department heads, and I analyzed other counties across the state. And we have about twenty-six different departments, and most of the Oregon counties have between twelve and fourteen. So, and each of those, each of our department heads makes, you know, between ninety-five to maybe a hundred and ten thousand. And so I think there's consolidation among, what some of the counties do is they have one department that oversees building and operations, maintenance, building safety, property management, forestry and parks, which is basically the resources of the county, the physical resources. It's been suggested that animal control be under the sheriff's department, that because they deal with a lot of the animal control problems. Some of you are shaking your head. I'm just saying, these are suggestions. The assessing, planning, and surveyor's office could be combined so that you don't have to go pandemic for law and then down to the courthouse for another. Public works and transit is a natural combination. The public and private partnership, I went up to OHSU on Friday and talked with them about doing an aging and Alzheimer's study here in Southern Oregon. They're looking for a place in Southern Oregon to do it. I went to Roseburg to talk with the Cowpaw Creek Tribe about their business incubator there, and they're, they're willing to talk about having one here in Josephine County.
I agree with Tony on the consolidation of departments. I was appalled by how many there were, because when you have more departments, you have more management, you have more layers of administrative services that can be combined. The other thing that I'd like to do, which I have on my card here, is that when the county is having budget difficulties, and some people are insulated from that, particularly commissioners, I'm going to try to get the commissioners' salary and benefits reduced over in this crisis period, because everyone should share in the bell-ticking. I have that right here on my card. The other thing is that we don't have a purchasing agent or purchasing office. Every single one of those twenty-six departments orders their own supplies. There is no economy of scale or attempt to save money on those, and I think we do need to have one person that handles that. Also, contracts. When contracts go out, they call them RFPs, repressive proposals. Each department head writes their own, submits it to the county council for review, and then it goes back and is solicited. There should be one department that does that, or one person. And the contracts and the purchasing could actually be one person. They could already be an employee. It could be an additional job added in another department. The service contracting is something that's actually being done. We don't have to declare across the country, but we're servicing contract. That's done in Moldoma County. It's also done in Plaquemines County, where counties have had difficulty in budgeting, just like we do. And what they have done is they have gone across county lines to contract for services. Some have computers that can do services in one county and back and forth. So I think we need to look at that. Thank you.
If you are successful on the term of commissioner, will you support or oppose a county lawsuit against the BLM seeking a court to compel BLM to obey the nineteen thirty-seven ONC Act? And here's your answer, a promise.
I have to stand up first and say, I will defer to the legal minds. I mean, philosophically, again, philosophically, I'm, I'm supportive of that whole idea. I just, it's like a burden to yourself to have somebody telling me how best to spend my money. And it's just an aggravation. So I'm sure there's a whole lot more to the lights and whistles and all that other stuff than just what you're, and I'm not using what you're saying as not the truth, but there's a whole lot more to that. Philosophically, might, would I be supportive of something like that? Yes. Now, I mean, to say that, oh, you promised you would never do that? I mean, you know, but philosophically, I'm not really keen on BLM taking over and saying what we're going to do and that kind of, that's not in my philosophical DNA.
Jack, I would assume that what's behind that question is a funding question. And if that is what's behind your question, yes, if I was elected county commissioner, if a miracle would occur, I would, yes, I would take the federal government to court, BLM to court, because this is primarily a funding question. And while we're on that subject of funding question, I want everybody here in the audience to realize that I was the only one that fought for this county to get federal money, said that they would get it, and they did get it. And my two opponents, Bob Just and Cheryl Walker, continue to hold out the light for property tax levies. They hedge, they're politically correct, they will not answer this question. Are you, if you're elected commissioner, are you going to be for property tax levies or not? If you're going to hedge now, when you get into office, all the city staff and county staff around you is going to convince you to put it on the ballot. So, yes, I would support taking the federal government to court, because these are our lands, and we should have money to be able to, you know, develop our resources. Unfortunately, we have candidates here that refuse to answer this question directly, and they're just going to sabotage our future like they will, like the past ones did, and these guys will too. So, yes.
Federal government has very deep pockets. If you try to sue them, they will keep you in court for the next fifty years. Josephine County could not bear that alone. And I think if there are other ONC counties, and there are other forestry counties in other states as well, if they were all together, that might be a potential resolution to getting the ONC money restored, not only to our county, but to other counties and other states that have a similar issue. But as Josephine County alone, we couldn't afford to do it, we couldn't sustain it.
Cheryl, you have ESP. That was exactly what I was going to say. I would be in favor of Josephine County joining a consortium of the counties that have been direly affected by the loss of ONC residents. So, yes.
Yeah, I would absolutely be for that. The problem with working with the ONC counties, and I think that should absolutely happen if they're willing, is they may not be willing. They may not be willing to do what you want them to do. I want to come back to the point of leveraging a timber deed. I was looking into the mineral issue and found out a good attorney who charges, guess what, about five hundred dollars an hour. So Cheryl's point, and Tony's, yes, it's expensive? Absolutely. Can Josephine County do it? Well, you know what? Maybe right now, we can't. That's the whole point. Think outside the box. If we were to get thirty to forty million dollars upfront, use a portion of it to shore up our criminal justice system. I want, that's important for you to understand. It's an immediate answer to shoring up the criminal justice system. Then leverage the remaining amount of money in many different ways. One of them would be hiring lawyers to fight the fight, but until now, we have not been strong enough to fight it. Now, I have the advantage of being able to get on national media through WorldNetDaily and the Hannity Show. So it's not just about lawyers in a court. Bureaucrats run from light. They run from getting the glare of public attention on them. And we can put the glare of public attention on them. It is something we really must do. We must engage in these fights and not submit to the federal government the way we have in the past. Stand for what's right.
Three years ago, the county commissioners had the opportunity to vote whether or not the public union employees would be granted a pay increase. And previous in history, it was related to the Consumer Price Index. That year, that was flat.
Good question.
Would you vote to increase the union pay if the Consumer Price Index was flat or negative?
No, no, I, we really need to rethink everything. And this is not about singling out people. I'm not running to take away people's jobs. My excitement about the timber deed thing is it turns us from a negative position, more money from the people that are choking already, turns it around and tries to pull it into a positive approach, you know, going from crisis management to creative management. And, but even with that money, we are going to have to pull our belts in. As I told you, we're the new paradigm. We don't know what this, we don't know what the dollar, what the dollar is going to do. We don't know where this country is going to be in a year. Everything pivots on the November election. Conservatives can get back control of the Senate and maintain control of the House and reclaim the White House. There's going to be a rush of optimism in the free market. There are going to be business people who have been holding their money back because they didn't know what was coming down the pipe. My wife and I are partners in Carries of Oregon. You want to know what a business that hires twenty, twenty-five people or so, what a small business like that does to struggle and struggle to make ends meet? So we need, we don't, we need more tax burdens. We need to turn it around. We need to turn it around. And that involves pulling in our belt and that involves, you know, uh, union salaries as well as everything else fairly negotiated.
Could I, could I read, this is public union for county, yes or no? Yes or no?
I have a question.
Be a little smarter. What was it, what was the second, your, your question was what?
The consumer price index.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I don't care if the consumer price index goes up twenty-five thousand percent, I'm not gonna vote and support increases in salaries that are already through the roof. But that has nothing to do with how I look at it. That's one reason why we're in a pickle where we're at. Because right now, the negotiators come in, uh, the employees saying, we want, I'm just using a hypothetical figure, we want eighty thousand dollars and we say, I have fifty thousand dollars. And so they then get the arbitrator and the arbitrator's pointed not from locally, he's pointed outside of county. He comes down or she comes down and he and she say they have it up and so that, so of getting eighty, they get seventy-eight. So that, that's part of the problem is that we've lost the ability to have meaningful dialogue in there. And so it, it's more than just dropping a hammer, there's gotta be the negotiation, you gotta talk to people, you gotta be willing to relate to people. Some of these are long-term processes, but I'm not, I'm not gonna support increasing anybody's salaries. Listening to Cheryl, it was nice. Back at the Budget Committee hearing, I was the only one, I had, I submitted a proposal to take the county commissioner's salaries from seventy-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars in this new, uh, the new year's budget. The vote passed, law, I mean, I lost five to one. So that's something that I've already been on record for and standing for, that'd be the first thing I'll say if I get there. But we've got to get a little more realistic, but we're having and, and not just jump on these things in late, late time because of the cost of money.
I have a different feeling about public unions versus private unions. I'm all for private unions. A public union, considering how governments are going bankrupt, uh, they need to be ran in. Um, PERS is hurting our county. Uh, cities like Stockton are going bankrupt. What bothers me about people who are running for office is they bring up national issues and its impact upon Josephine County. National issues don't have a great deal of difference here whether the country is very prosperous or whether it's not prosperous. Candidates that stand on this national issue stuff are trying to impress you when in reality, they need to stand on local issues. That's something that Bob Just does very well. He brings up these great, this great paradigm and I say, how do you come to county meetings? How do you stand on property tax levies? This is the issues, not national issues. So yes, locally, I am against, uh, increases to, uh, public, public unions. I have a different feeling about private unions. Um, that's my feeling.
I, I'd like to just take a point of personal privilege.
Can we say that there's...
Mark is attached continually.
Can we all finish this?
Okay, answer the tough questions.
My, my, when can I answer it? I'll have a question.
Have your chance.
My, my. Continue the process. Continue this and then if you want, I'll, I'll give you a rebuttal.
Thank you.
To Mr. Sullivan after the morning.
The short answer is no. The long answer that I would like to give though is that you do not have to give a raise even if the cost of living is going up. When I worked for the federal government, there were six years I didn't get a raise at all because the economy was so bad, even though the cost of living was going up. There were six years at, at the federal agency I worked for, didn't get raises. And there were unions, but they just said, we don't have the money, the budget is not there and we just didn't get them. And I think that's appropriate. If the government doesn't have the money and they can't give a raise, they shouldn't give a raise.
Carolyn, the, the answer is no, definitely no. Most of the county employees make far more than the average income here in Josephine County.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, just, just for the record, I, I did come out for the first levy in the very beginning.
Point, point, or how long is this gonna deal out?
One minute.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I did come out for the first levy. My levy statement is on my website and I'd be happy for you to look at it. The great thing about the possible, possibility of a timber deed is what it, we all wanna be responsible.
Point four, that's not a rebuttal.
We all be, wanna be responsible to not have people harmed in the streets because of our problem with criminal justice. The, the beauty of the timber deed possibility is that it becomes an alternate to taxes. So now there is another way and so I'm against taxes.
Okay, would anybody else like to respond?
Yeah, I would, no.
Okay, let's move on. Anybody who hasn't asked a question, somebody have a question because we're running up against the clock here.
I, I have another question. It's really outside of our realm of everything you've been asked so far. What was your expectation, a lot of committees and commissions in the county and the city, uh, or, this is hard with county because that's what you're doing, but, um, what do you, what do you expect of those commissions? You expect them to be little rubber-stamped commissions that disagree with everything that the staff gives them? Or do you want them to ask questions and to be thoughtful, god, and to probe and to actually come up with relative, um, reasonable answers to things and not just fall over and agree with everything given?
Repeat the question sixteen more times.
Sixteen more times. What do you expect of your commissions? What do you expect your commissioners on your commissions to be? Rubber-stampers or thinkers?
Well, certainly thinkers. I, yeah, I think, and, and, I mean, there, I don't think there's any doubt that if I'm the commissioner, we're gonna have a lot of thinkers involved. A lot of the advisory committees, people don't know who's on them, they don't know when their term is up, that will be public knowledge and I will encourage some very qualified people in the committee to start applying to these advisory boards and commissions.
I agree with Tony. Commissioners don't know everything, that's why you have boards and commissions. You have people out there to find out the facts, to find out what's going on, on our communities, they're to provide that information to you. Whether you like it or not, you need to pay attention to what's going on out there. When people are saying something, you need to, to listen to what they're wanting, listen to what they're saying. They sometimes have a better solution than you do.
Vivian, when you talk about commissions, one, the first one that comes to mind is the one that's in the news lately about urban growth boundary annexations. Am I right on that one? Now, how many people are here that live in Grants Pass? Raise your hand. Both of you, okay. The city of Grants Pass has this urban growth boundary, they had a meeting over there and they wanna expand their urban growth boundary because of growth they feel in ten, twenty years and then eventually annexed. Well, the truth is that this city will do anything they can to increase revenue and increase your taxes. Not one of these commissioners here comes out on the side of the county residents. They're gladly love land, they rubber-stamp exactly what this growth, this urban growth boundary was. This city can barely provide public safety for its own people. Seventy percent of the crimes committed in the city of Grants Pass, yet they won't let the sheriff deputize two of their own. So they wanna add more land? I think there's a problem with that, but I think commissioners should stand up for county residents and not yield to what city commissioners, counselors want. Be a thinker.
Mark will be thrilled to know that the commissioners just put a big cog, or a wrench in the cog of the urban growth boundaries by asking certain questions that are, are going to basically stop and cause a serious reevaluation of all of the, uh, the urban growth boundary lines. Because they meet in a joint session, the city and county commissioners do, and the county commissioners basically threw the, threw the fly in your mouth and, and now support back to square one, well, maybe square one and a half. But it's, it's not a done deal. It's not the idea that commissioners are just rubber-stamping the city. But yet on the other hand, that's a, i- issue that, that urban growth boundary is a big hot button issue. That's sort of gonna sort of limp along now and tell us some reason, more, more reasonable solution. Do I think that, uh, that there is, uh, the need for commissions? Yes, absolutely. Do they need to be independent thinking commissions? Absolutely. Uh, that doesn't mean that they should do everything that we say, nor should we do everything that they say, but if we can't have some merging and, and clear airing of opinions without fear of being vilified, then what's, what's the use in trying to do anything?
Yeah, I, uh, I absolutely agree with what Keith just said. You, you need a, a, a commissioner, boards, advisors that are thinking people and will really look at the facts and the ground. And you need commissioners that are not afraid to say, you know, I don't agree with that. That's how our system works. I was at the joint city-county, um, meeting and it was interesting to see the conservatives line up, you know, it, it comes down to a view. We have two different cultures. Our county culture, and this is part of our problem with criminal justice system, our county culture is very different than our city culture. I've lived in the city, I live now in the county, very different. And, uh, so there's going to be that tension and we have to understand that we, that we want commissioners that are fair-minded to look at the situation and make a proper judgment and not be pressured politically, uh, but to do the right thing.
Okay, we're running up against the clock, so at this time, we will go to closing remarks, um, each candidate has three minutes. Start yet?
Okay, well, I think we've covered an awful lot of issues here. I, I think one that hasn't been covered that I have gotten involved with over the last year is our very high student dropout rate, it's about thirty-five percent. And, uh, last year at the Grants Pass High School, I, for the last two months, I taught the second-level computer class in internet marketing and I saw firsthand, you know, the, there's a lot of dropouts, but there's also probably another thirty percent of kids that are sitting in school and disengaged and, uh, just waiting to graduate. The schools have a policy now that even if the student is flunking every single class in a grade, they go ahead and pass them on to the next grade. And that is not doing the student a favor at all. And I think that needs to stop. There's, there's several issues that, that I'm addressing also in the school. I mean, we, we have a serious drug problem in the county. Uh, we have a serious, uh, prescription abuse problem and I've talked to the Sante and the Pharmacists Association, I've been corporate about it, they're developing a poster for emergency rooms. Back to my list here. And I guess the other issue that I'm going to be taking on, I've already talked with our new city manager and he agrees that we need to have more cooperation between the city and not just Grants Pass, but the city of Cape Junction, Williams, Merlin, Wolf Creek. We need to have more cooperation in, in all of the cities in the county. And in closing, I'll say that I would appreciate your vote and we're all looking forward to the results on November sixth. Thank you.
Over the last several months since the primary election, I've been working very hard, going every week to at least one, usually two or three meetings in people's homes or at different clubs and talking to them, finding out what their concerns and what potential solutions they have in mind, so that I can accumulate those and have those people as references as well to solve some of the problems in the county. I've had a lot of good feedback and I intend to keep using those people as resources. I also think that we need to have some changes in our county structure as far as combining the departments to economize. I think, um, it's important that as an advocate, being a county commissioner, it's important to be that advocate for the county. I've already started working in that regard. I've met with some of the legislators and I met with Bruce Hannah, one of the co-speakers of the Oregon House of Representatives, and talked to him in regards to lottery funds. Uh, there's a fund with the Lottery Commission that it's all designated for economic development, education and, uh, fish restoration. What isn't designated by the constitution is usually allocated by the legislature in those areas. And he said that there's an awful lot of money that is not being spent for park, uh, state park acquisition. And in fact, the state can't afford to maintain them, so that money is accumulating. He said he thought it was somewhere in the vicinity of a billion dollars. So I've been working with him to see if there's some way that we can define, uh, public safety and criminal justice as one of those necessary items in the economic development of a region. So we're working on that. Also, the sale of land, when we sell, a lot of people say, sell county land. When you sell county land, the money must, by state law, go to parks. And I would like to see that law changed so that that money can go to the county so that we can use it for what we need here in our county. We certainly don't need to have more parks at this time, we can't afford to maintain them, just like the state. So I'd like us to have that money to use for our, uh, development here.